Apologies, I was not paying attention. I think we're all here. Welcome everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. All of the board is present except George Seberg, who will be joining us in about 30 minutes, but he said to start without him. So we do have a quorum. And I am going to read the equity statement tonight. "In Asheville City Schools, we are committed to equity and anti-racist policies for all students and staff to learn and thrive. We recognize that our positions come with power, responsibility, and public service for the entire ACS community. We will model our commitment to equity through our practices and decisions. During this meeting, we invite a pause if harm has taken place, a moment to name the harm, and space to practice repair." Thank you. At this time, I'm in just a minute going to look for a motion to approve the agenda, but there are two changes that I want to bring to your attention. One is that the second contract listed, which is Bus Planner, is actually under $90,000, so we don't need to vote on it. It was just inadvertently listed for action. So really, it's just received as information and we won't be voting on it, is the change. The Bus Planner. It was only $69,000. It just means we're not going to act on it, is the change. And the second thing is on the school nutrition calendar. After consultation with Maggie, we're going to pull that off the agenda tonight and talk some more about it and it'll be back. So we're not going to talk about it tonight. So with those two changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We have unanimously approved the agenda. And at this time, I will entertain a motion for the Board of Education to enter into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318 dot 11 for the following purposes: Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged and confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115c, 319 through 321; and under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will now move into closed session.
one, I'm going to call on Heidi.
All right. Good evening. As of today, not June 30th, but as of today, we have the Budget Amendment and Expenditure Report. As you all probably know, we always have this year-end meeting in order to try to help close things out. But due to scheduling conflicts this year, this had to be moved up. If we can, think about that in the future and try to schedule this meeting on the 30th or as close to the 30th as possible. It would help this be a more complete document and report. But the budget should be fine. We just have considerably more work to do on the expenditure side of things. So if we
Sorry, Heidi.
Well, no, it's a fact of life. We all have conflicts, but it is very difficult to try to do a closeout this early. I mean, I know it sounds like it's not early because it's only a few days away, but for this time of year with what we have to do, it's early. Does anyone have any questions about the Budget Amendment and Expenditure Report as presented?
I think I asked you, or let you know in advance, I'd be asking about the balance including escrow column in the budget summary and board report document where it shows a grand total of $12,291,959.52. What is the relationship between that number, and I guess that's the total of the balance as of today, and Funds 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 8? What's the relationship between that and what people talk about as the general fund balance?
Well, first of all, our fund balance isn't in all of those funds. It would only be in Fund 2 and 8. We're charged with expanding, or fully expanding, to the extent possible, Fund 1 before June 30th. So as you can see there, there's a considerably large amount of money left. We will be moving things around and, like I say, expanding that down to as close to zero as possible with the parameters we're given by the state. Fund 2, as I said, and 8 are our local funds. Fund 3 is our federal grant program, and a lot of that money does carry over to next year, so that is separately accounted for. Fund 4 is the capital fund, and there is obviously going to be a good bit of fund balance left there. That's independent of what we can traditionally consider our fund balance. But what I need to make you aware of there, too, is, as you can see, there's a large amount of accumulus still out at this point. And so some of those projects are summer projects for maintenance, and those will be carrying over into next year. So that is not necessarily all the money that will be available next year. So as we continue to make the adjustments through the rest of this week and Monday, we will continue to make all the adjustments in the funds that are needed to be made. And then actually in July and August, we still have a lot of entries that have to be made for the auditor to make all the final entries that need to be booked in our system. So by the time we come back in August, we'll have a much better idea of what fund balance we may have to work with moving forward.
I really appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
No, only to say thank you again for the way you present this to us, where each time we see how we're moving our way through the spending, it's very understandable. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we will be voting on both the budget, excuse me, we're voting on the Budget and Expenditure Report, right, Heidi?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
And the Budget Amendment, the first sheet?
Okay, sorry, I saw the word summary, and that was why I quit talking about it. Yes, we are, apologies. So we're voting on two things. Looking at Heidi to help.
You don't actually have to vote on the Expenditure Report. You're welcome to vote on it. You just have to vote on the actual amendment.
Okay. We are voting on the document that is titled Budget Resolution and Amendments. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Budget Resolution and Amendments.
No, just the amendment. That's the title. It does say Budget Resolution and Amendments.
On the actual document.
I second.
I was looking at the document.
Agenda, and I see the resolution somewhere else. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the document that says Budget Resolution and Amendments, which we are going to vote on? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. We turn now back to Heidi, item 3.2, on our interim spending resolution.
All right, thank you very much. As you know, we had a brief glimmer of hope that we might get a state budget this year, but we did not. I understand there is a mini-bill in the works to perhaps address raises, but they plan, what's today, the 24th? They plan to go home day after tomorrow and maybe gone through the end of July, so I don't expect to see that anytime soon unless they really get busy very quickly. They are passing a lot of policy bills right now to try to do some work before they go home, but the budget is not going to happen. So as a requirement then, for us to continue to operate next year, the board has to be raw at this interim budget resolution, and it is the standard, basically, language from, straight from the general statutes about what we would do, and that would be to continue just operating as we are. No pay increases, no steps, no bumps. Everyone's pay would remain the same for next year until we get further information from the state. So does anyone have any questions about that?
Heidi, I just want to clarify. We pulled the school nutrition calendar off of the agenda. We don't meet again until August. So if the board votes at that time, then those managers will, they'll know two days before that they would be losing days of pay if the vote would pass.
Right. With that pulled off the calendar, all that we can do is roll them into next year with exactly the same compensation as they receive now, no reduction in days, and then the next time you meet, you could take action. But that would be only two days before managers come back and a week before the workers come back.
And I know that we kind of got some last-minute feedback and wanted to clarify the, just for the board, the process. So Melissa had informed the staff that because we have this practice of paying staff for not, on days they don't work, that she was making those changes, and we would officially reflect those changes in the calendar. So that was the whole process leading up to the change in that school nutrition calendar. So I know that we got some last-minute information on that. However, the communication was done, it just wasn't done like, hey, here's your calendar. It was, hey, you're getting paid for days that you don't work. It's the law. We're not supposed to do that, so we needed to rectify that.
Yeah, see, actually, at the beginning of last year when I got here, I did not realize the calendar included those days, and I thought it was just an administrative decision. So I had told Melissa to please give her folks a heads-up way back at the beginning of last year to say, those days should not have been included in your calendar, and we'll correct that this year. And so then, we had the other budget considerations and all to add to that. But then, in the last few weeks, since Shan has come on board, he has actually distributed a training calendar to them. I was at the meeting where they had an agenda where they discussed the days that they would come back and all the additional training opportunities we're providing to them this year that we have not been able to do in the past, and that would be, those would be paid days, and then there would be several training days spread through the year. But there would be those nine required workdays that would no longer be compensated. But we did not feel comfortable distributing the calendar because it was a pay reduction and something that the board would have to approve. So that's why we did not actually distribute this calendar as something final out to the staff.
But it was posted on the board agendas.
It was. It was in the board agenda materials the first time we discussed it, and then it was in there this time.
I would like more information about how we could make an adjustment to the calendar, but it not impact anybody's pay, whether that means an incremental increase for our food and nutrition employees. Would like to know how that's done. And then, I am concerned about staff being able to take accrued time off and how a calendar change may affect that.
Well, right now, your newer staff actually generally do not have enough annual leave days to even take all the ones built into the calendar. But they would still be able to take their annual leave days during the breaks like everyone else does. This is only affecting those nine required workdays to bring their working days down to 202 days.
I just want to offer some perspective about, Maggie and I had a conference right at the beginning of the meeting and why it was tabled, which I'm not even sure was the right word. But just for context, Rebecca and I had, Rebecca did all the work, had gone back and looked at, you know, how this is still on the agenda. And it had been pulled or taken off the consent agenda, I think in April. And one of the reasons was to get feedback from staff. We had not gotten any up until tonight. I hadn't gotten any. We didn't know of any feedback. And right before the meeting started, we heard some feedback that there had not been information shared. So given that we just, it wasn't time to process the information we were receiving or to hear, you know, was it, like, communication's tricky sometimes. It's provided and you don't hear it. Sometimes it's not provided. But Maggie and I just made a clutch moment decision to take it off. Procedurally, where I think we are, unless there's some thing we do to put it back on the agenda, but since it was taken off, the approved agenda, the calendar continues as it was last year. So there are no changes. There is a revenue impact to our budget that will have to be dealt with in other ways. I mean, that's part of what Maggie and Heidi will have to figure out what to do. And what Maggie and I talked about very briefly is, we probably need to revisit this and figure out some options. So I want to be clear with everybody, and Anna can tell me if there's something we should do different, but I think by taking it off the agenda, it's not anything we're going to vote on. And so the status quo is what we have. I just want to offer that. That's how we got here.
And I seem to recall that it is a rounding error impact on the budget of less than $36,000. So it's, you know, it's not as big of a deal as putting something else off.
Amy.
That was my question, how much it was. But also, I guess my second question. First, thank you for that explanation, because that was going to be my question. How did this happen and why? Because I'm confused. Next question I have, though, is, so if we're taking off tonight, and you just talked about the fact that if we did it at our next session, it would be two days before and four days, five, you know, within a week of the folks coming back, is the understanding or the intention then not to have it, to have this calendar, the current calendar, not the new calendar, governed for all of next year at this point?
I think I need time to talk with Heidi.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we have the status quo until the board gets a recommendation to do something different.
Normally, you would never get the calendar because it's just an internal calendar, except for the reduction in days, which is why we needed to bring you the counter. So for next year, basically, oops, wrong pile, but this would be the calendar. The question would be, are those nine days going to be compensated or are they going to be non-compensated? But this is the calendar that the school nutrition program would use, and we could still let them know that, if that's okay. Because a lot of folks want to schedule those doctor's appointments, dentist's appointments, and all those things ahead of time to make sure they don't conflict.
So is everybody okay with where it stands, which is not on the agenda? Okay. And I think, apologies, we got there with, have we voted on the spending resolution yet? We have not. That's how, that's how we got there, is we got off on that. But understanding that, are we ready to vote on the spending resolution that's before us? Is there a motion?
I do have one question. With this resolution, will our principals receive an interim budget?
This, and I do apologize for this and the budget amendment and expenditure report being a little late to the packet, but I think Dr. Maggie gave you some background on this insurance proposal. As you can imagine, the insurance companies are reeling from the impact of Hurricane Helane still at this time. So the first proposal we received back was higher than we expected it to be, so I asked our broker to revisit that, and they did come back with what I feel like is a very favorable increase over all policies. It came out to only 11.57% increase this year, a little over $54,000. And then our student accident insurance, which is the second kind of coverage we take, actually decreased about $10,500 because of a decrease in our ADM, because that's strictly based on how many students we insure in our student accident insurance. So overall, considering the market and other things I've heard from other people, I feel like this was very competitive, and we did budget up to $100,000, so we're well under what we had put in as a placeholder in the budget.
I want to commend Heidi for her hard work on that. I continually am impressed with her ability to negotiate and find ways to save money in many different ways, so want to give her a shout-out on that.
Any other questions about this insurance recommendation?
I have lots of questions, but I don't think it's necessary for the meeting. So I'm hoping to have an opportunity to ask more questions later, maybe in the fall, just to better understand our coverage. I am curious about whether we have reached out to the North Carolina School Board Trust and how, if we've explored anything with them recently.
We haven't reached out to the School Board Trust. I don't know that Heidi wouldn't have any information to share about that right now because we've used Suri and have gotten good coverage with them and a good price, and it wouldn't be beneficial for us to change that at this point.
I have, the one thing I have heard is that the actual state insurance trust, not the School Board Insurance Trust, has had some favorable property premiums come out this year, so we could, you know, shop that next year to see if that would be a price break for us. The thing that, and I've done this for a long time, the benefit we get from using Suri is that all our coverages are under one umbrella, and they also advocate for us jointly between all the companies. And we have basically just two avenues then, student insurance and all other insurance to have to deal with. So, you know, if there's an overlap between coverages or, you know, liability becomes something else, you know, there's, there's not a separate company then to have to approach to try to negotiate those differences. So it's very helpful for us to have that all under one umbrella, but if we do see a significant price difference, obviously, you know, we would consider a change.
Thank you.
And I will just say that when you get to multiple companies who are disputing who should pay for what, your attorney's fees go up.
Yes, indeed.
Are we ready to vote on this recommendation? Is there, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move that we approve the recommended insurance.
Second.
All right, the motion is before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
One more for Heidi. And just to remind everyone, it's only about the Bud Group, that's the only one we have to vote on.
And I do, just as a little background, I do think Bus Planner got added because of the cost of the current carrier, and they wanted to make it clear that this was a way to save money and expand services. So I think that's why they wanted that explanation there for you to hear, so. Yes, the Bud Group is basically just a replication of the current year contract in order to take care of the custodial services at the high school, and then they provide some coverage in the district as needed. And if you have questions about that service, I think Principal Edwards is here tonight, and you could ask him.
Other questions for Heidi or anyone?
How many custodians does this, it's approximately half a million dollars? And so I'm just wondering, how many full-time equivalents is that covering?
The contract is up to that amount, but previously, we'd never gotten all the way extended up to that amount. It kind of provides us a ceiling. And I don't know, Derek, do you know how many Bud Group staff you have?
It varies because they may be working part-time or full-time, and there's a day shift and a night shift and afternoon shift. So to tell you how many actual named individuals that is, that can change. It is about the number of, I guess, hours, man-hours to be completed during the week. So it, yeah, it varies to tell you an exact number of employees that is, because it's just about covering the number of hours they've got assigned to the, to the different areas.
Other questions, board members? Are we ready to vote?
I move that we authorize the Bud contract. Sorry. Bud Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the contract? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
May I ask about the Bus Planner switch?
It was for information only, but you can ask about it.
Okay. Is this the software that Buncombe County is currently using? Or is this, okay. But we're switching from, which software are we switching from?
They currently have Bus Planner for their routing and SamSarah for the GPS service. So what this contract would let them do is transfer everything over to Bus Planner, and that way, their GPS, the routing and all that will be all connected. It's been a very well-rated software, and they've been very pleased with the piece of the Bus Planner they have right now. And it would also accommodate the additional responsibilities, I guess you'd call it, that we've put on the Transportation Department in managing field trips and invoicing for field trips. That is a very time-consuming task. There's a module in the Bus Planner software that allows them to do that much more efficiently. So they're very excited at the prospect of having that all under one software umbrella.
So...
And it is a little bit more reasonably priced, too.
So does that mean that the aggregate amount of what we're paying to Bus Planner is above the $90,000 threshold?
No, that's the total cost there. The new total cost of everything.
Oh, okay, so this includes the software we've been using?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to move to our last action item, which is the Personnel Report. There's been thorough discussion of it during closed session, and at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I will request a roll-call vote.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the Personnel Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we are going to have a roll-call vote, and we will start with Pepe.
I vote no.
Okay. Jesse?
Are we going in line like this?
That's what we're doing.
According to what we are, that we spoke about, within the Personnel Report, I say yes.
Thank you.
I vote yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes. Personnel Report has been accepted. The next discussion item is something I asked to be on the agenda, and I'm, there's staff here. You guys are welcome to stay. It's not going to hurt my feelings if you leave. This last item is a chance for me to check in with board members at the end of this school year and talk about how we work together next year. So that's the purpose of this discussion item. And I had, we're not going to take a long time, don't you worry. But I wanted to start with getting some feedback from you all about how well the board is communicating with each other. We have texting, we have emails occasionally, I have one-on-one meetings with you all during occasional times. And I checked in with Maggie about how she's worked with other boards, and one of the things she told me that I don't do is, when we do have these one-on-one meetings, I need to make sure I follow up with an email or something to make sure everybody has the same information. So that was good input for me. I really am just sort of checking in. Again, not a long, productive conversation, but what do you all think it works well? Thank you, Anna. What could we do better next year as we communicate internally as a board?
Okay, I'll start. As long as there's runners, walkers, cyclists, yoga, we can do all those things. We can catch up with anything else that needs to be called up. But I feel that we need to be outside of this building when we do communicate. Give us a fresh start to conversation that we have. Also, just give us an opportunity to meet a little bit better one-on-one and have those courageous conversations that a lot of people don't want to have, but it seems like if you're having a one-on-one conversation, it's, it seems like it's a better conversation. With the class that I just came from a couple weeks ago, with the courageous conversation, I don't mind having a conversation with anyone. I feel that if they want to have a conversation walking up the hill or running the River Art District or get on a psych and bike and whatever, we can have those conversations as long as it is a conversation. It's not trying to overpower one person or the other. It's just having a conversation that a lot of people are not having these days and just be more relaxed and have a conversation. I think a lot of people are afraid to have courageous conversations nowadays, but those are what is needed in order to, for us to stay as a team, as a board members. We just have to have a conversation. So, and I learned a lot a couple weeks ago in courageous conversation.
I'm going to talk more about that, Jesse.
Yes.
I mean, again, I'm happy for you all to give me feedback. I just really was, this first, I have three points, and the first one was, as we communicate with each other, any input about more texting, less texting, more emails, more communication from me, just looking for constructive criticism or comments.
I think, if I may, the only thing I would say is, I appreciate the communication we've had. I think we've done a very good job of adhering to our open meetings requirements, and as we've all grown in experience as board members, most of us, and the only thing I would say is, having served as vice chair and now as, you know, a line member of the Board of Education, I'm aware that there are so many more meetings and conversations happening that I'm not privy to. And so I think I would, and I know how it feels to be on the other side of that, having so many meetings that you sort of have to figure out what to communicate and what not to communicate, and there's really hard decisions, but, and sometimes a little more. Thank you.
Point made. Thank you, Amy. I'll do better about that. Okay.
Sarah, you brought up the word email, and I am absolutely drowning in emails from the district. That's not just from the board, it's just from the district. And I understand that we've got to get information out, right? And that being on the board means that I'm a part of lots of group emails that just, you know, are to keep me informed. I have a hard time catching up with them. And so sometimes I feel like I'm less informed because of how much is coming my way. I'm not saying to slow down on the emails. I think it's important that those are there for record-keeping, for those kinds of things. I wonder if there's something in advance of a work session and also in advance of a regular meeting that could be some kind of summary thing, not just the agenda of what's coming up for discussion, but maybe these are the things that have been happening across the district, right? These are things that have been popping up. They might come up in meeting, even if they might not, but I think that would be very helpful, almost kind of like a clearinghouse. And I'm, and I feel bad saying it, because I know that puts more work on you as chair, having been in that position, I know. And, or puts more work on Kim Jones, or puts more work on Maggie, whoever, but I do think it would be a helpful thing.
I'm going to tell you how I heard that, what you need me to do, and I can let Maggie respond for her, but I don't always tell you all what I'm up to. I mean, I try to, and then sometimes I don't. Like, I didn't tell you all I was meeting the CAE, because I just reached out to Tracy and said, I'd like to sit down and chat. And what I'll try to do in one email, not 17, is say, you know, maybe ahead of a work session, hey, folks, this is what I've done the past month, right? Is that what you're asking, George, so that it's concise?
I'm not asking this. I don't, I mean, you are, we each have our own things that we're doing. I don't think we have to keep each other informed on every little step we take. And there's so much that happens, even in a district this small, I might miss things, right? I might miss what's a big conversation among a lot of folks within the district, but it just doesn't, it doesn't, you know, fall at the right time in my inbox or whatever it might be. And so, some kind of summarization of, these are the things that have been going on in the district since the last time we met, and things you might, you might have missed, right? Does that make sense?
How about, if you're good, George, I think that's a great idea. How about I work with Maggie and we maybe figure out a way, like, if there's, to your point, a way to share this is what's going on? Because we got the Friday follow-up, and we got this and we got that. Can we talk about it and figure out a way to do it? I mean, but message received, thank you. Okay. Just so you guys know where I'm going on next, is how we communicate outwardly and back to us. This was just internally. Anybody yet got any other comments or suggestions about our internal communications? I'm going to move on. Okay. The next conversation I wanted to have is, how do we communicate with what I'm just broadly going to call stakeholders, staff, parents, community members? And I just wanted to go ahead and say that I don't do a great job of, I know it's part of the board chair, and it's part of our norms that I respond to everybody, and I get a lot of them done. I'm not proud of this, but if it, if it's somebody who sent me an email that they've cut and paste, and I'm getting 50 of the thing that says the same thing, I'm not always responding. I should, but, sorry, I'm going to try to do better. We've talked about this before, it just seemed like a good time to say this out loud. I think we all know that if somebody emails us personally, because they know us, their kid went to school with our kid, it's fine to respond. And here are their concerns. I think our, the understanding I have is, when we hear concerns, we are bringing them back to Maggie, right? Because we're saying, hey, I'm hearing a lot about this, or I'm hearing a lot about that, that that's our role. And so I just want to remind people to be polite and, you know, be mindful of folks who are communicating with us and what we're doing with that. So I'm going to just pause there. That's kind of what was on my mind, but I would love feedback from you all about how that's going. Are you feeling good about how you communicate with stakeholders and how they communicate with you, or what would you offer?
I CCU when I'm responding to stakeholders. And I know the rest of the board doesn't see it, but I'm letting our board chair know whatever it is that I'm putting out there.
And although I appreciate it, you don't have to do that. I mean, you choose to, and that's fine. And Pepe does this, like, please always say, I speak for myself. You can't speak for the whole board. Amy, were you going to say something?
The only thing I'm going to say is that I think, this is one of the biggest differences, and I'm sort of saying this as a public meeting moment, this is one of the biggest differences between my aspirations as a board member and the realities as a board member, which are that, you know, I had believed that I could just respond to every concern myself as an individual board member, and that I could be really responsive to the stakeholders. And I think I've, I've learned that... And I think I've, I've learned that, that sometimes it's really important just to allow the board chair to speak. And of course, if there is a particular relationship, that's when I do respond. And always, I think, hopefully unfailingly, have communicated with Maggie about those concerns. But it is a very frustrating part of serving as a board member, that it feels like I'm not as responsive as I want to be, and also that if I were as responsive as I want to be, everybody would get a book on the various considerations and how, what they're concerned about is often not completely informed. So anyway, I just want to name that it's a frustrating part, and I think, for my part, I think you're doing a good job, and I've come to appreciate the reasons why we should be speaking as a board. And I think the biggest thing I want to say is, we hear you every single time. Like, I hear every word that is emailed to me. I read it, I contemplate it, I spend time thinking about it, and I will respond when I think a response is necessary to Dr. Furman, or to Sarah, if that's appropriate, or Rebecca, or him ever. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that, too, that I think we often hear about closed-session material and that we make a point in closed session to uplift the voices that we've heard and advocate for. And that's not something that'll ever be in the public eye, but that it does happen.
And certainly tonight's not your only opportunity to give feedback. If you think of ways that you think we could improve our communication with stakeholders and them with us, you know, let me know. My thought is, I want to be receptive, right? As, I'm speaking as the board. We should be receptive to input, we should be respectful, we're not trying to sow seeds of division, we're just receiving it, passing it along. I think almost every time Maggie's copied anyway, but sometimes we hear things, you know, differently, and I try to pass those along. Because that's our job, is to hear concerns from the community and our stakeholders and receive those.
And I guess one request that I would have from board members is, when you respond to stakeholders, that you include me or forward me your response to them, so I can see that the concern's been raised and understand that the board member may have responded.
Okay. Okay. I'm moving on to the third and final one. And again, I had a, my mindset is looking ahead to next school year, because we don't meet again until August. And I wanted to talk about, this is a combination of things, but they all are around our equity work, the equity statement, the centering race, and the, using the pause for harm, like kind of how that is used. This isn't, we're not going to revisit the equity statement tonight, that's not what I'm about. But I did want to think through how that informs the work of this board. And I would love, very briefly, if Jessie and/or Rebecca and/or George, who have all three taken the Courageous Conversations training, want to offer any insights about how that work and that training might inform how we work as a board to do that work. So I'm looking at these three.
I'm not a text-computer-type person. I work mainly outside, I'm outside 6% of my day. And having a conversation with people is what I rather do, because there's a lot of things we cannot text, and a lot of things that you cannot just put on paper or email or whatever. So that's the reason why I don't do a lot of email and text. So I will give you a call and say, hey, can we meet somewhere for a walk, or can we just have a conversation? With that said, when people are together and having that conversation, they feel, I felt good after two weeks of conversation with people that I have not, some I haven't seen before, some I haven't met before, it'd be some people that I say hi to and never stop and have that conversation with. And I think that is what's missing within our district. We just don't spend that one minute and say, hey, how you doing, before you go to that classroom or to that place where you are decided to go. It's bad when I come to central office and pass by doors and not going in and say, hello, how you doing? Going to a high school and pass by classrooms, if teachers are outside, then just pass by them. You know, it's nice to say hello to people, all right? Kindness is the best thing that we can do in this district here, all right? And it would be nice, we are just a little bit more kind to each other, and that's what that courageous conversation did while we were sitting in that room for two, for two days, is spoke of kindness. And with that said, because I know time, I just wish that more conversations would be just about courageous and just pick something that people are afraid to talk about and just have a conversation. And just be more kind to people. The world itself is bad enough, but when we have to work together, and I have to see each and every one of you guys at least twice a month, I would like to be able to come up to you and say, hey, how you doing? How was your day? Even if you lied to me, hey, it's okay. But I get that hug, and you get that hug, and we are good for that particular moment. And that is what's important to me, and should be important to our district.
So, caveatting all of this with the fact that it was last year that I did Courageous And it's, it is one of many trainings, workshops, et cetera, that I've been engaged in around the work of racial equity. I really appreciated specifically two things during that training. One, the compass that Maggie, you've alluded to quite often, and we've, we talked about it, I think, in our retreat, I think is when you first brought it up. And that, that compass, thinking, feeling, acting, and what was believing, thank you. And at the start of any meeting, any conversation, kind of grounding yourself where you are on that compass. That's one, I'm going to come back to that. Second one is a real distinction between types of conversations and types of listening. And Courageous Conversations does a really good job of distinguishing between listening to respond and listening to understand. And especially in European culture and American culture, I have been trained over and over again to listen to respond. And oftentimes, I recognize that in my head, I'm thinking, all right, what's my response going to be to this? As opposed to taking that time to truly listen to what someone's saying. And one thing that Courageous Conversations actually forced us to do in the training was to listen and actually repeat back what someone said. And so that was also really valuable training, especially when we, as a district, continue to need to work on the inequities in this district, the racial inequities and the harms to black people, to brown people in this district. And me, as a white person, recognizing that I come with advantage and privilege, and there might even be, there could be some real fear around reprisal, or whatever it might be, for someone who is not from my ethnic makeup coming to me to have a conversation. And so, again, getting that training over and over again, that I am listening to understand, not to respond. What I'm challenged by, two things I'm challenged by, is, you know, it's a two-day training, it's an excellent training. One thing that I think we in leadership don't always do is model how we expect educators to teach, and that's circling back to concepts over and over again. Even as adults, no one very rarely gets something the first time, gets a concept. And so how can we, as a district, continue to circle back to Courageous Conversations? I mean, I said that I, the caveat is, it's been a year since I've done it. And so how can we build in systems for returning to those concepts and then have a shared analysis? I think it's great that we've got other board members who have done Courageous Conversations. If that's going to be a framework by which we operate as a district, Maggie, I know this is your vision for the whole district, we, as the whole board, we need to have some expectation that all of us are part of that training, because then we have that shared analysis. I remember when I first got on the board, there was the conversation about everyone attending Racial Equity Institute training as a shared analysis. And so if, if, I don't even want to say, well, if, because we, as a district, must be committed to resolving the injustices that have happened to our Black and Brown students and families for, for a long time, because of that, everything that we do needs to be doing what Courageous Conversations teaches us to do, which is isolate race and make sure that the decisions we're making are informed by that isolation. And we're having, again, a shared analysis. It can't just be me having done it a year ago, it can't just be Marta having, you know, kind of as, you know, it has to be, and we've discussed this earlier, it has to be all of us working in that shared analysis. So that's my takeaway.
I echo what George says, that having just done it with Jessie, and being in it, it's so inspiring, and you feel so energized, and like so many things, then you have to practice it. And if, I do think it's a good framework for our district. I think it is accessible. I think that it, we could build a culture here where all the adults not only have been to two days of training, but have meaningful ways of practicing it. And one thing that I wanted to share is David, our trainer, he actually named as an example that he, I think, oh gosh, I hope I have this right, what I remember is that he shared that they had started putting the compass on all their agendas. They started every meeting by naming where they are on the compass. And then it became rote. And it was just a way of starting a meeting. And so like, even when you're working to embed, the practice is, takes a lot of effort, but I do, I do think it's what we need to do. And I think that we need to invest in how, like, there has to be a plan for Marta's becoming a practitioner, it can't all be hers. What's the, what's, where's the accountability that we hold ourselves to? Because we'll mess up, we'll be messy, we'll do things wrong, and it's a way to make sure that, because one condition is get ready to be uncomfortable, and develop a sense of like, being okay with being uncomfortable. But that, to me, feels like the biggest part, is that, as George called, the shared analysis. And it is, how do we support each other and all the adults in our district with practice in an ongoing, meaningful way?
Thank you all for sharing. And I'm, I think as we get closer to August, I may have Rebecca and others of you take, help us maybe approach our board meetings a little differently in light of all this. So stay tuned on that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, can I just thank Marta first? Because I, Marta heard lots of people who were super excited about Courageous Conversations, and they mentioned your good work. So I just want to say that. Yes, go ahead.
My question was, do we know when it will be offered again?
Our plan is to offer it at least once a year, so we haven't selected our dates yet for next year. But yeah, that's the plan, to keep it going and continue to offer it. And in light of political context, I don't know that I can require everyone to do it, but it's the expectation that we share, that all staff are going to complete this training because it is a framework. And it, and George, I think you said it really beautifully, it's about listening to understand, not listening to respond. And that key piece in there is how we will start really creating a common understanding and allowing ourselves to be empathetic to someone else's experiences, and be able to see how a situation that I might experience as a white woman could be as different as possible as an experience that Jessie may have as a black man. And I think we were going to walk, and this woman walked past us, and Jessie said good morning to her, and she just, I was like, whoa.
But the bear stopped and said, hey.
But the bear did. The bear said hello. And that's the interactions that are happening on a daily basis. And I think had I been alone, she probably would have said hello to me, if I had said hello. So, yeah, it's a, it's a framework, it's, it's more than, and it's, it's helpful to drive our equity work and to make sure we can achieve equitable outcomes in lots of different ways for students. And I also appreciate what Jessie said, it's just a way to treat people respectfully when you have a conversation.
Sarah, I'm sorry, can I ask a question, or just throw something out relative to starting the new year in August? You know, we've, we have this equity statement that we read at the beginning of every meeting. My memory is, when we first adopted that, we, we said, that's a living document. And it's now been at least two years, if not a little longer, that we've read that. And I remember, Liza, if you don't mind me calling you out, I think it was you who said, I want to make sure that this doesn't become just performative, right? And so, I think it's important that we are stating norms at the, at the start of every board meeting, that we have something to ground us. And also, if that equity statement needs some tweaking or some, or some growth to it, so that it doesn't become just performative or just, yeah, I just want to name that.
I like the way you said that, George, and I'm wondering if maybe on our fall retreat, that would be a topic that we would, as a board, discuss, maybe?
I'd like to check into, I may be wrong. We didn't make this statement. There was a group of educators that worked hard to create this. They spent a long time, so this wasn't like a board creation, this was a district creation. And so I think that should be part of whatever, yeah.
Yeah, kind of what I envisioned is collaborating with Marta, our district equity team, getting some feedback, because most of them have been through the training and saying, okay, bring up like, some recommendations to that retreat for the board to consider.
Along with the equity statement, and this is, this is just a flat, looking for clarification, at the last board meeting, when there was a request for pause for harm, and I don't want to go into that, or, I just want to share with you that it's my understanding that we use a pause. I wanted to get some clarity from you all about when we say, could we pause? I know it's been used over the past year, and I have always, just me, have viewed it as when we are witnessing institutional racism, or racialized data, or something that we're seeing that as a board is troubling, and it's a moment to say, that is troubling? I have in my mind when we use it, and I just wanted to touch base with others about when it should be used, so that we're all on the same page about that. So I didn't know if anybody had other thoughts about it.
I think that, that, I understand it similarly. The only caveat or addition I would add is, I don't think it has to be race-based. So for example, if there was someone who made a comment about the queer community, I might feel harm, and I might name that as well. But I do think it probably, in my mind at least, has not been a, a personal harm that's, like, it's more a harm that I might feel in that moment, but probably wasn't directed specifically at me, if that makes sense, or maybe it could be. But I don't think of it as a, you know, hey, you offended me a minute ago, or I offended you, and so, yeah, I hope that makes sense.
I appreciate that, Amy, because I think that the concept of it, as I remember, is related to systems of oppression. And how, and, and Racial Equity Institute, that was the first place I learned about, and I always say it wrong, I'm going to call it system one or system A, like, kind of automatic thinking that happens fast. My brain can process things really, really quickly, and then I can just know how to respond versus things where you have to slow down and really think about it. And for mainstream white people in particular, there's a lot of what we make sense of the world, where we can use system A really quickly to just move fast. And the pause is a place to say, "Well, we're moving real fast on something that isn't landing the same for everybody." If we slow it down, we can take a hot second to think a little more with the front of our brain and, and potentially catch ourselves before we're rolling through doing something harmful. That's what I'm thinking about with it.
And the pause is intentional because it then allows that moment for you to re-center on the compass. So we know that when you are really moved into one quadrant, you're not balancing your actions. So that pause is part of getting re-centered on the compass so that you can engage in discussions, which is also restorative practices. Like, that pause, that moment of separation, so you can process and then be ready to recapture your thoughts. So that's another kind of reason for the pause. So it makes sense for that pause to be asked in a moment when you're like, you notice like, "Oh, my gosh, I am way over in feelings. I am having a hard time even focusing, I'm feeling ill." And you're like, "Okay, I need a second just to take a breath." That's, that, like, recognizing that that's probably other people feeling that same moment or people being oblivious and not. And then being able to interrupt and address and repair.
Thanks, everybody.
Could we get a copy of the compass again? Because it's been a while since I saw it. Thank you.
Yes, I will. If you all think of anything else that you think of as we start into the new year, new practices, new communication methods or whatever, please just let me know. Because we got a whole other school year coming up, but that's working together. So thank you, everyone. I really do appreciate that. There are some future meetings and announcements in the agenda. July 4th is a holiday. We will next meet on Monday, August 4th.
Also share one thing. We will send out communication to the schools about the new principles as well as a press release in the morning. So I would just respectfully request that board members who are privy to the appointment names, not share anything publicly until we are able to communicate with the staff.
And I would like to make one more comment. When there's a death in the community or in the family at Asheville City School, it would be nice if sometimes, either before, abort, or after, we just take that moment, that seconds or 30 seconds just to give a pause so that we can recognize it and go and support that family. Well, we do appreciate, well, the family will appreciate it.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's your second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor. All right, opposed. Excellent. Thanks, everyone.